Good afternoon.
Turn my microphone.
Good afternoon and welcome to the June 16th, 2025 briefing for our meeting on June the 19th, this coming Thursday. We actually have, we're going to review our agenda, which is a long one because we have a lot of end of the year items. So we will move through those, but afterwards, we do have one discussion item, and it really deals with potential letters from this body to Senators Budd and Tillis regarding the SNAP program. And we'll, actually, we have a draft to review, and we'll discuss the whys and wherefores relative to that. Without further ado, turn the meeting over to the county manager, and we'll go through our bunches of items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, Commissioner, staff, and guests. The agenda items before you are for consideration for the June 19th meeting. Agenda item number one is a public hearing zoning petition of Kernersville Little League Baseball, Inc., from HBS to RS40. Chris Murphy, our planning director, will brief this item.
I've got to be on the thing first. There we go. Thank you. Sorry about that. I was, the Teams window wasn't open. That was throwing me off a little bit. This has, we, this has been previously briefed, and there was a public hearing that was held open on the 5th, continuing this onto the 19th. I'm not going to go into a lot of the information that I've previously been over, but again, this is a request to rezon from existing HBS for the use Recreation Services Outdoor to RS40, general use request. This is located within GM85. This is an area that is predominantly zoned AG and RS40. I think earlier today, I went about a mile and a half, using my cursor, a mile and a half to the west, a mile and a half to the north, and a mile and a half to the south. And there are a couple of outlines zoning districts like IP for school, some MH for manufactured homes, but going a mile and a half from each, from this property in each of those three directions, everything is either RS40, AG, or RS30. And all of those uses, all of those zoning districts have similar uses, and what the Kernersville Little League is requesting is to rezon to RS40, which would be the same zoning district of the surrounding subdivision, and then there is existing AG to the west. This is a subject property shown on the countywide aerial imagery. Again, it has been used for fields since the 70s. It was formalized with a rezoning in 1987, but over the last several years, it has been used sporadically, mostly for practices. Again, this is in the rural policy area. There are no parcel-specific recommendations, but this, the policy guide does recommend large lot residential development within the immediate area, and as I just alluded to, there is a significant area of RS30, RS40, and AG in the surrounding vicinity. Here are some of the images. This is looking west into the subject property from Stunstall Road. This is looking west into the subject property, again, from Stunstall Road. You see the field in the background. You see a picnic shelter-type pavilion there in the foreground. This is looking east along Stunstall Road from the subject property, looking back towards Sahibi Road. And this is looking north from Sahibi Road onto Stunstall Road, and that's where the directional sign was located. As was requested at the hearing on June 5th, I did include what the special use district site plan that was approved back in 1987 shows. It does show for the use rec services outdoor, it is for a sports field, baseball, softball, et cetera. It does have several buildings, including a, like a press box or, you know, scoring booth, and area for concessions, picnic shelter, and parking. There were also a number of conditions, some of which today I would fight to have included as conditions of approval related to speed on Stunstall Road. It said you couldn't drive more than 15 miles an hour. It did have some hours of operation limitations, which we've tried to get away from, but looking at those hours of operation limitations, if someone wanted to operate a, operate this as a commercial enterprise and have games, obviously during some parts of the year, it'd be more likely than others, but you could have games on these fields 81 hours a week, looking at the 10:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and the 1:00 to 7:00 on Sunday. Anyway, so those were the conditions of approval. There was also a request, a question regarding RS40 uses, and I've included that in this PowerPoint as well, and it should have been the information that was included. RS40, RS30, and AG all have the exact same uses that are allowed by right, with a couple of exceptions. If you're zoned AG, you can have a few more agricultural-related uses than you can under RS40 and RS30, but other than that, the uses are identical. Agricultural tourism, animal feeding operation, fish hatchery, and urban agriculture are all uses that are allowed in the AG zoning, but other than that, RS30, RS40, and AG have the exact same uses. The summary, the request was found to be consistent with the general recommendations of Legacy 2030 and the Northeast Rural Area Study. That's the policy guide. The request would rezon the property to zoning, to a zoning district that is consistent with the surrounding properties and zoning and land use pattern. The request would allow for the redevelopment of the site to compatible single-family and agricultural-type land uses, and the request would return the property to a zoning classification consistent with its pre-1987 rezonated HBS. Again, this was heard by the planning board back in May. There was one speaker in opposition, and it was the same person who did come and speak to you on June 5th. After the public hearing, the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning, this downzoning from HBS to RS40. I know one of the things that was mentioned at the last, at the public hearing on the 5th was wanting the petitioner to be here, and I think that they will be, but again, I will just continue to caution that all, only thing they can say they're going to do with prop, with the property is what's allowed under RS40 zoning, since it's not a special use district or a special use limited request. They can't tell you definitively, we're only going to have one house, we're going to have three houses, we're going to do a church, we're going to do this. Anything that would be allowed under the RS40 zoning would have to be considered if you decide to approve this. And with that, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Well, I was the one that raised some questions, and then when asked to continue. Again, I was just puzzled at there being opposition, even if it was the one that was opposed to the downzoning. And then I read back through that again, and so the, this is the least dense of any zoning. The only thing, I would probably guess, still have the same amount of dwellings would be the ag, and that's, I'd, I'd intended to visit the area. Well, occasionally, I go down that, not the road that goes to the.
Stigall.
Stigall Road.
Yeah.
And so I hadn't got back, but if nothing happens major between now and Thursday, I'm planning on it, but it does appear to me that it's, to me, it's, unless it's something there that I don't know about, is as compatible as anything else can be. The water, public water, I'm not, I don't think it's public water right there, but I may be wrong.
It's well. It's my understanding, there are wells. There's not public water there, I don't think.
I didn't think it had got that far down on 150 or anywhere, really close, but the, one of the things I did ask about was the access to it, and you, I believe you said it was, was dedicated. The fact that it is dedicated, is that a legal instrument?
It, it's legal in that, you know, it's, it's offered for dedication. It is a public, public dedication. No one has accepted it yet because it doesn't meet the requirements for the number of homes for the state to take it over. Sahibi is maintained by the state, but Stunstall is not, because currently, it only has, I believe, two homes on it and Kernersville Little League. I don't think that what the, and again, they could do whatever is allowed, but I don't believe the intention is to go in and put a large subdivision in there just based on the acreage and the fact that in order to do that, they would have to bring that street up to public standards. It currently doesn't meet public standards, but it is a legal means of access, but being a privately maintained street, they would be limited to the number of lots they could create without bringing it up to a public street standard.
Well, in some situations, there, and it may be because there's private easements, goes into a, I don't know what kind of subdivision you call it, but it goes into an area where there might be four or five houses that's built on it. Under the building regulations, if there is a private easement to a parcel of land, can like four or five houses be built on it, but that, then with that, the state's not going to ever take it over until it's built to specifications. So, well, in this case, was what you're saying there, I believe, what, six acres and something? Well, that means if, if the land would park, and it could get water, well, the park would be one of the main things, soil. If that could be done, approved, then is there a reason that a house or up to six couldn't be built there?
The maximum, I believe, I'd have to do the math. The maximum, I believe, would be six, but again, without a public street, and even though it's, it's dedicated republic, it's not a publicly maintained street, I believe they would be limited to cutting no more than three lots up. So I think their maximum would be three, unless they brought that street up to public street standards, but you are correct, under the, under the most dense scenario, it would be six.
Well, I just, I was just puzzled. That's a little unusual, but I just can't recall how the vote was on that those years ago. I think it was opposition, though, and it's a possibility that I voted in favor of that, but I don't.
I can answer the question if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead and ask.
You vote, you voted in favor. You were one of the three in favor.
So I can.
And I believe, I can't remember if that's actually in the minutes, but the minutes are included in your pocket as well, and I'm not sure if. included in your packet as well, and I'm not sure if it showed the vote, but I did go back and look at what that vote was. But it was a 3-2 vote, and again, it was, you know, there were concerns then about going from residential to commercial, and now we're having a concern going back to what it originally was. So, but it was a 3-2 vote, and there was a lot of discussion, and there was a lot of neighborhood.
Well, I think it was opposition about it, because if a person is, would be concerned about traffic going in and out, what four or five houses would generate the traffic, I think probably is what brought that thing in to begin with, the years ago.
Yeah.
In and out to the ball field. So, okay.
Well, I, I just, I sensed from the hearing that, and the persons who spoke, is that there's a lot, there are a few rumors, and I think she was speaking for some other neighbors, I probably take her word on that, that there were other people concerned because they just don't know what it is. I think it's, or what's likely to happen and to understand that. I think they realize under its current zoning, there's probably, it's probably never going to be used. I think they could, I think it could probably speculate that it's probably unlikely to develop at all under the current zoning. And even though it's a downsizing, the downsizing very well could develop into things, and whether it's the agricultural events center, whether it's, you know, X number of houses, and as I understand it with the, if I remember her comments, it had a little bit to do with the condition of the roads when it rains.
When it rains.
And the mud, and the this and the that, and all these, and the very issue of state maintain, all those kinds of things. I think that's, I think that was the general sort of personal concern of what this is going to do to the carriage of our neighborhood if we have all this happen, because they're pretty sure, I think, under the current zoning, nothing's going to happen. And I think it's, it's one of those, everybody can speculate on things, but without sewer and without, I mean, without water and without sewer, there's not much going to go there that's of any size, except, you know, some houses if they were available. So I, I, I think there's a lot of rumors about what the, the, the owners, the current owners, really are wanting to happen. They want to sell it, yes, and is there already quote unquote buyer in the wings because, and I realize that the, the sellers have no obligation to mention that at all. I mean, they're asking for just a blanket change, and they don't have to, but I think that's what's, it's almost like they're needs, I guess I was hoping between, and I hopefully with the, with the representative here, hopefully from the Little League Association, will get a little better understanding of what they think might or could or should, or they can't speculate at all. They'll just say, can't, we don't know, we just want to, we want to unload this. I mean, is what they want to do.
True. But, you know, again, keep in mind, again, I know, I keep reiterating this, what they say they're going to do is not binding with the.
Exactly.
With the general use request.
Exactly.
Right.
But I think it's that lack of communication that's led to the, to the opposition. I mean, that was, I don't think it was just the persons who was here that was, I mean, I think.
Well, it's funny, because one of the folks that spoke in support of it at, at the planning board, whenever I turned and said, you know, she spoke in favor, she's like, I'm not in favor of it anymore. And again, I, you know, I can't speculate as to why, but she spoke in favor of it at the planning board meeting, so.
Anyway, we will continue, and hopefully, apparently nothing has happened in the interim in terms of conversations between, it doesn't appear to be. Maybe there has been, but I think it's a matter of communications, probably some of that, people would feel better about the, about their life, you know, and what's likely to happen if they could just have some better knowledge. I think that's part of the issue. But we'll see, we'll continue, and we'll have a person there.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to say that I had asked for the, the site plan and the conditions. They're in the record. I've had a chance to look at them, thank you. And Commissioner Linville, in addition to 3-2 vote that you were in the majority to allow, you were the one who specifically raised a limit that was agreed to by the petitioners at the time that there being a loudspeaker system operated on the site. So that, there's, there are some specific limits that you put in that that are, are still salient in terms of what they could do with the site today. I also wanted to ask about, now, this was a, a general use rezoning request. And I recall that with the consent of the petitioner, it was not unusual for conditions to be attached to, to rezoning requests. And in particular, this seems like an ideal case that, that the two sides could agree on to an L, you know, limited. We didn't even need a site plan, just say that these are the uses that would be allowed. And if you, if you've limited that to residential development specifically, then that would answer all the concerns about other things that they could do. And wondered if that's not something that the sides maybe want to sit down between now and Thursday and discuss.
Well, that's in the table of uses, all those things that can be done.
Yeah, but you could say that, but these are the uses that would be allowed in this case, and just, you know, write down the residential uses, the ones that were not specific, the ones that weren't like, you know, feeding operations, for example, that they might argue had, would have a.
You're not wrong, but it can't be, I mean, they could sit down and have the discussion between now and Thursday, but in order to make that happen, they would either have to, they could say, we're not interested in doing that, and commissioners vote us up or down, or you could remand it back to the planning board to amend their petition from a, from HBS to RS40, change that to RS40L, and specify the uses that they would agree to and any other conditions of approval, if they wanted to say, we won't have more than X number of homes, whatever they wanted to do. But I think that would need to more than likely be broken, whenever they show up, just ask that question of them. You know, again, in our mind, and this is one of those things where we're trying to, whenever someone comes in to talk to us about something, you know, generally speaking, when we're going from an HB to an RS and everything around it is the same thing, we wouldn't generally think that an L would be necessary there. So that wasn't a conversation that's, you know, that was had at the staff level. But again, obviously, if there is concern moving forward as we go into Thursday, that's certainly something that you could broach that subject with Kernersville Little League and/or the Realtor. I think they're both going to be here.
Well, I understand the petitioner's entitled to ask for an up or down vote on just the, the general use zoning. But if they, if they want to make peace with the, the opponents from the adjoining neighborhood, the other is an option. Thank you.
You have the questions for Chris. All righty.
Agenda item number two is an approval of minutes for the special meeting and regular meeting of June 5th, and those will be sent out to you tomorrow. Agenda item number three is a resolution approving the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Funding Plan for Fiscal Year 26 and authorizing its submission for state approval and implementation. Kimberly Bussie, our deputy budget director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh oh. Thank you, Tim. Okay. This is in the agenda item as well. This item is for the Fiscal Year 26 Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Forsyth County receives paths through dollars from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, or JCPC, each year to allocate to various organizations through a request for proposals processed in an effort to reduce and prevent juvenile crime. On June 2nd, 2025, the JCPC met and approved a funding plan that allocates $940,852 to 13 organizations for fiscal year 26. And this item is necessary for year review and approval for the recommended FY26 funding plan so it can be submitted to the state for local implementation. There's also a breakdown of each organization and their legal funding name in the item, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I assume that those that are continuing have basically met the goals they set out and their commitments in the previous one.
That's true.
Unfortunately, I'm afraid some of them were goals like, we will have X number of sessions, and they had them. And versus, are we showing a reduction in crime, for example? Are we showing less, you know, return offenders? Are we, what are we showing? I mean, it kind of gets at what their metrics are in their grants, but that, that, I assume we, at least what they said they did last time, we, that we accepted, we're okay.
I think that's a true story. Yes, sir.
Other questions for Kimberly?
Okay. Agenda item number four is Kimberly's as well. It's an amendment to the Fiscal Year 25 Budget Ordinance to Appropriate Revenue from Juvenile Crime Prevention Council grantees to reimburse unspent funds from Fiscal Year 24 to the North Carolina Department of Public Safety.
Yes, thank you. This amendment is necessary to appropriate revenue from two JCPC organizations from Fiscal Year 24. In that year, the county received again $940,852, which was allocated to 10 programs. These funded organizations spent 100% of their funds, except for insight human services, Forsyth evaluations in the amount of $2,968, the YWCA Work and Earn It program in the amount of $3,189, and the JCPC admin in the amount of $380. If this item is approved, funds will be appropriated to the FY25 budget, so we can reimburse the North Carolina Department of Public Safety in the total amount of $6,537. This will mean that Forsyth County will have spent 99.31% of budgeted funds for the JCPC in FY24. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this item.
I take it the YMCA program is not on the list we just approved?
That's right. So your question is, for 26 programs, did all of them meet their, their targets? That's true. And you noticed that that organization is not on the list for 26 because they did not meet their, their outcome measures.
Questions? Any others? Thank you.
Agenda item number five is a resolution approving a second revision to the Fiscal Year 25 Home and Community Care Block Grant County Funding Plan for Older Adults and authorizing execution of necessary documents to submit the revised plan for state approval.
So this is, forgive me, Forsyth County Aging Services Planning Committee has recommended a second revision to the Home and Community Care Block Grant County Funding Plan based on a request from senior services to shift $4,900 from adult day health funds to adult daycare. This has been approved, or this needs to be approved by the Board of Commissioners as well, so the funding plan can be submitted for the state. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on this item.
Questions for Kim.
Agenda item number six is Kimberly's as well. It's an amendment to the Emergency Telephone System Fund to accept a transfer from the General Fund to account for ineligible expenditures in Fiscal Year 22.
Yes, thank you. The county has received correspondence from the North Carolina 911 Board that the fund balance in the Emergency Telephone System Fund, as reported in our 2024 audit, is understated by $1,395 compared to the annual public safety answering point revenue expenditure reports due to a travel expenditure that we reported and that the 911 Board has now determined was ineligible. This item does transfer that $1,395 from the General Fund to Budget Reserve, which will go back to this Emergency Telephone Systems Fund, Fund Balance. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this item.
I did notice that the, the exception, whatever was not allowed, was like a 1922, you know, I mean, it was 2022 versus the 2024. Was that the reason it was rejected?
It's unclear. These are, funds are notoriously difficult to spend. I can get you the specifics of this travel item and get that emailed to you before Thursday if you'd like for me to get more information on, on the why.
Dr. Martin, that was not the reason. It was, I think, determined to be ineligible at that time, but if you remember, we had delays in completing the audits for those years, and there was some turnover in EMS, and we just didn't follow through with bringing this item back to the board so that the money could be moved. But the determination was made the time we filed the report.
Okay.
And back in '22 or '23, whenever we did it.
I got it. Other questions?
Is there, was there a basic reason why the, the travel was deemed ineligible?
I don't know the answer to that. It may be that it's never allowed, or they are difficult sometimes to follow with what they're going to allow from year to year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Right, and agenda item number seven is an amendment to the Fiscal Year 25 Fire Tax District Special Revenue Fund and the Fiscal Year 25 Budget Ordinance.
This is something that we've done for the past few years in preparation of closing the fiscal year. Each year, we budget estimated sales tax proceeds in the Fire Tax District Special Revenue Fund, along with the transfer to the General Fund to support county fire suppression. In the current fiscal year, Fiscal Year 25, it is projected that actual revenues will exceed estimates in two districts, South Fork and Triangle, and an amendment is necessary to increase appropriation. So amounts in excess of the original estimates might be transferred to the General Fund, and the Finance Department has requested these revisions for Fiscal Year 25 to the Special Revenue Fund and to the Fiscal Year 25 Budget Ordinance, again, for their year end preparations. So I think together we can answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Kimberly. Done, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight is a resolution ratifying and authorizing joint applications by Forsyth County and the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools to receive $3,657,177 from the Education Lottery Fund to retire a portion of the county school debt bond indebtedness, and then the amendment to the State Public School Building Capital Fund Grant Project Ordinance. Adam Fernbach from our Finance Department will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item authorizes the application to North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for the county to receive lottery proceeds for the current fiscal year. These proceeds will be used to, or would be used to retire indebtedness from the 2013 and 2015 refunding bonds, which in turn were refundings of the 2007 education facility bonds, in addition to other ones. But this pertains to the portion of those two refunding bonds that arise from the 2007 education facilities bonds. And it also amends the State Public School Building Capital Fund Grant Project Ordinance to accept those lottery proceeds and transfer them to the Debt Leveling Plans Fund. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Adam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine, or amendments to close the 2016, 2018, 2020, and '22 Schools Capital Projects ordinances and transfer various balances. I will let Lee Plunkett, our deputy CFO, walk through this item.
Good afternoon. I'm going to hijack a few moments to talk about our recent bond sale. I think there's a packet there in front of you, and if I can figure out how to share this, I will. Appreciate it. So just wanted to give you a brief overview. Our financial advisors put together the summary just to give you an idea of how the sale went. And the sale was last Tuesday, June 10th, where we sold 33.635 million in general obligation bonds, that's our two-thirds bonds. And they were sold on a competitive basis. We received 13 bids from different underwriters, and the winning bid went to UBS Financial Services with a true interest cost of 3.884%. And you can see a summary of the bids that were ranked there below. This was considered a successful sale. I think the, the week before, we were looking at 3.94%. So again, a very good sale, and grateful for the conditions that we were in when we did sell the bonds. And then this is just to give an idea of where the project funds are going, and I know, probably the most important part, we talked about premium and what would be available after the sale and where those would go. On May 22nd, you all adopted the new CPOs related to education and the county, and their 1.7 million in premium was part of that adoption. And so we received just north of that at 1.766 million. So that would mean the schools receive an additional $530,000, the county $1.1 million, and Forsyth Tech just under $100,000. So came in a little higher than budgeted, which is also great. So anyway, congratulations on a good sale, and just wanted to pass that along, why I had you.
Thank you.
And to the item on your agenda before you, so CFO Terry Goodman, Deputy Budget Director. This is in the agenda item as well. 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 And to the item on your agenda before you, so CFO Terry Goodman, Deputy Budget Director Kimberly Bussi presented several items to you all back on May 22nd related to the aligning of the accounting structure of capital projects under the new CIP methodology. And that methodology is really driven by projects rather than funding source. As a result, you all adopted a brand-new county capital project ordinance and an education capital project ordinance. And now that, those capital project ordinances house all our projects under one ordinance rather than under multiple different ordinances. At the May 22 meeting, you adopted the county-related projects, closed them all. Terry walked you through and moved them to the county capital project ordinance. This item does the same thing for the education-related ones. So the items before you today, A through H, are all eight of the outstanding schools and Forsyth Tech CPOs that we are closing. And then item I amends the education CPO, the one that we'll be using going forward, to accept all of the residual balances and appropriate them accordingly. And we've put them into three different buckets, the actual projects, budget reserve, and debt service. So for projects, if there's any open project that is still ongoing, those moved over. Those project budgets in total did not change, and they'll continue to go forward as expected. For budget reserve, there's two parts. There's about 3.2 million, if you remember, left from the 2016 referendum bonds, the $350 million original budget. Their schools are still to allocate about 3.2 million of that. And then from the 2023 GO 2/3 bonds that we sold, about 17 million of that was unofficially designated for Ashley. And so we've placed those into budget reserve. And then in the last bucket was debt service. We've kind of got two subcategories there. So due to IRS restrictions on bond proceeds, we'll have a general debt service number and then a debt service reserve for arbitrage. So the primary funding source for all these CPOs are bond proceeds. And the IRS says you can only spend proceeds and any interest generated from those proceeds on debt service, capital projects, or arbitrage rebate liabilities. And so I know we've talked a lot about the arbitrage and how that liability has continued to grow. So we set aside a large chunk of those available interest earnings to that purpose. And then we set aside a different amount, just in those debt service for schools and Forsyth Tech, that could be used for debt service, reallocated to future projects, are the two main ways that the IRS says that you can spend those. I believe there have been discussions and talking to the county manager about paying debt service on those. And so if, we did some preliminary calculations, and I was looking actually in fiscal year '26, but there's about $4.7 million in schools debt service in fiscal '26 that we could pay with these funds. And then about $1 million in community college debt service that we could pay with those funds. Looking at the current year, it'd be about the same number, maybe a little bit higher. And so I'm meeting with bond council tomorrow to kind of get a, just fine tune all the nuance of IRS regulations to make sure that we're following those correctly. But that is an option. You can also use that to go towards other projects that you have or that they've requested, different things like that. So those are the three buckets that we've dropped everything into. And then the last two pages are just a resource, hopefully that'll help you. It just says, where did all these numbers come from? It's complicated to look at all the different closures all and try to put together. But those last two pages should be a one-for-one on where they were and where they are now. So hopefully that's helpful. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. That's very helpful. And I'll reiterate what I said when we did the county parts. This is really, obviously, a good idea, much easier to use. There has been, and I might ask Chantel to review some of the conversation that's occurred with the school district, on really two fronts, only, well, one of them relates to this directly. The other has to do with current expense capital outlay, which we do not have the answers on. But on this part, what would that do if the school district's trying to pay their bills? And so maybe you can, we could talk more generally, and what you actually just described it generally. You said it could be 4.6 million for the schools, and it basically could pay off debt.
Yes.
And so that would free, we have in our current budget adopted this year for FY26, we have some of our resources that would be used to pay off that debt. And if that were not necessary to pay off it, it would be money that actually results because they use their interest, and it would be available. So, and that's an amount. I'll let you continue.
Yeah. So, and Mr. Plunkett and I have had conversations, and I know you, Mr. Chairman. So if there was, if the Board was interested in possibly reallocating the debt service, or the best way I'll describe it, and Lee can say it in more technical terms, is because these interest earnings would be utilized for debt service that we already essentially have in our budget, so essentially kind of reallocating those dollars, it could possibly free up the up to, looks like the amount is almost up to five. We're in Lee's meeting with the advisors tomorrow to firm up the number. At one point, it was seven. And again, we're trying to firm that up. But long story short, I have had very preliminary conversations with the interim superintendent, and I meet with her tomorrow to have a better understanding of what the school's looking to do in that regard, if the Board is interested in possibly freeing up those dollars for something other than school debt or school projects. And then the other piece of that, that I will hear from her tomorrow, is about capital outlay that has nothing to do with bonds, but possibly repurposing some of those dollars to also help them with their debt. Certainly, all of that will come back to the Board in a more formal way, once we've worked out those details. But those are just some kind of brainstorming we've been doing on what are potentially available dollars that could be available to them that would not tap into our fund balance or increase taxes or anything like that. Lee, pick up wherever I've missed.
You guys have explained it very well.
Quick question on arbitrage. When will the final decision be made? Will the whole, will the issue have to be retired before that final decision is made?
So, we have, every year, we get evaluated, and that liability gets calculated. And so it's usually a five-year period from the date of issuance. At the end of the five years is when our first payment would be due. So the 2021 bonds would be due in 2026. 2023 bonds would be due in 2028. Obviously, if we spend all those bonds out before that, we would pay it at the arbitrage liability at that time.
Okay, I got it.
Other questions for Lee?
Lee, I'll wait for further information on this, but at this point right now, it's not something that I would be interested in.
Okay. Any other questions?
And Lee, do you want to just clarify right now where those funds are sitting? Where will the interest earnings sit? Just for clarification for the Board.
So if this, if this item is approved, the proceeds would sit in the new education capital project ordinance. And then depending on what gets chosen or what gets adopted to do, and if, for example, if it's used to pay for new projects, the money would sit there, and we'd just change categories. If it was used to pay debt service, we would have to do some additional items to move the money to the general fund in order to free up the property tax that would be normally budgeted to pay off the debt service.
And then just in full disclosure, I mean, besides wanting to clean up this item like we did the, our county CPOs, I mean, part of our reasoning too was, we were looking at, would there be available dollars for the schools to use for other school projects, such as increasing the amount for Ashley Elementary? So again, just in full disclosure, that was one of the items. But as we've been, obviously, as they're facing their finance challenges, the interim superintendent is looking at what are potential other available sources that are available. And then they also will soon be taking the, we talked about the other lottery proceeds that are available to the schools that can assist them with Ashley. And so I'll have a conversation with her about that tomorrow as well.
Would I be correct in understanding that what you're telling us is that if we redirected these funds from capital reserves to the school system now for emergency, various emergency uses, that there would be no net to the taxpayer from that transfer, but there would be a net reduction in capital funding available for school construction projects?
It would, but it's not money that, funds that they were expecting anyways. So it's not already programmed in what they were intending to do. It's extra dollars that we have found through interest earnings. So certainly, they have other capital needs, and if they were able to use it for capital, that would be helpful. But they were not expecting these funds. And so, and so it would not have any, I guess, negative impact to taxpayers, if that was your question.
That was part of the question. Do we have, are they, do we know whether they're still planning to try to move forward with the construction contracting this summer for Ashley?
The latest I heard was, in speaking with Daryl, I think July, they would have the construction manager chosen, I believe that's the right terminology, and then hopefully a revised estimate of the cost. And that was the last I'd heard.
Sounds like they're still planning to try to move forward on that.
That's, I mean, that is our understanding, yes. Because their hope is that what they believe that they, I'm going to say, are short on, would hopefully, the prices would come in a little bit lower. That's what they are anticipating, but who knows what's going to happen?
Okay. Just want to be sure we knew all the facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee.
Great. Thank you, Leah. I know that was a lot of work. Agenda item number 10 is a resolution authorizing execution of a second amendment to the interlocal agreement with the city of Winston-Salem for administration of the Cure Violence Program. Bailey Arnold, our grants administrator, will brief this item.
Good afternoon. May I take both items at the same time?
Oh, absolutely. I'll just read 10, and that's a resolution authorizing execution of a second amendment to the agreement with Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods approving a violence interruption program using ARPA funds. Thanks, Bailey.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I hope you're doing well today. I'm presenting those two resolutions for your consideration regarding Cure Violence. Just as a quick background and refresher, Cure Violence started as a project funded by county ARPA grant of $1.5 million. It consists of a partnership between Public Health, Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods, Cure Violence Global, and UNCG Serv Center, with support from an evaluative consultant as well. Additionally, the city of Winston-Salem has funded 50% of the original award amount. Previously, the Commissioners granted a no-cost extension to all of these entities through June 30th, 2025, and to August 15th, 2025, for UNCG to complete the final report. For today's resolutions, Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods has, the CBO performing implementation for the Cure Violence model is requesting a second no-cost extension to their agreement with the county. They estimate about $65,000 will remain unspent by the current end date. The requested extension date is December 31st, 2025, and that provides ample time for them to expend their full award and avoids disruption in their services as they transition over to county funds in the '26 budget. So you may recall that the ARPA guidance required that all funds be obligated by December 31st, 2024. So it may bring up the question of if this action is allowable under that guidance. The project had split funding between the county and the city. So the county's portion of the ARPA funding, the $750,000, was expended first. So now we are only expending from the city's portion of the $750,000. Thus, there is not the same ARPA guidance on that money. So that gives us the flexibility to complete another extension. That does mean that we do have to complete another amendment with the city interlocal agreement to reflect that requested extension date, since it is operating on that funding. And the city manager has indicated support for this and committed to signing the amendment should he decide to pass the resolutions. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions for Bailey?
Is the city operating on a different timetable in terms of federal requirements for assigning the funding than the county?
So I went and I looked at some of their stuff, and they have completed all of their projects. They primarily moved a lot of their ARPA funding into revenue loss a lot earlier than the county did. And they had maybe eight actual ARPA projects on top of that. So their, this funding is coming from their revenue loss strategy that we also completed.
They never used ARPA dollars for the Cure Violence program. It was always through the revenue loss avenue.
And, but we have moved all, we closed out our ARPA dollars before and/or before December 24. So it's not, we're not continuing ARPA, by closing it out with revenue loss, we took that side and continued with our own, with county dollars, the amount to finish those projects that had not been paid. So.
Yes.
Any other questions for Bailey?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 12 is a resolution authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement with the town of Rural Hall and standard fire and rescue service agreements with Beeson Crossroads, Blues Creek, Clemens, Griffith, Horny Town, Lewisville, Midway, Mineral Springs, Old Richmond, Piney Grove, Salem Chapel, Union Cross, Vienna, and Waccatown Volunteer Fire Departments to serve Forsyth County Tax and Service Districts for a one-year period. Calhany, our deputy county manager, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As the county manager stated, this is our agreements with our volunteer fire departments and the town of Rural Hall to provide fire suppression and rescue services in the county. I will mention a couple of things that are different. This year, we have previously had five-year agreements on these. It just happens that 15 of those departments, contracts end June 30th. The Board took some action last year to make some extensions to make that happen. This will be a one-year contract. And as we talked about during the budget process and from the fire study, one of the goals of the Fire Commission, which we plan to bring to you fairly soon, would be to look at the current contract, which has not been substantially revised in several decades, and propose some updates to that contract that would clarify the roles and clarify expectations. So that is why this one is a one-year contract and not a five-year contract. The other changes that are part of this are really all around the Board's direction through the budget to utilize overlay, countywide overlay district tax funds to supplement the rural fire and service tax districts. And so that, the edits would allow that in these contracts. And then the other note I'll make is that Midway Fire Department is owned here for the first time. Gumtree Fire Department and Midway are set to merge on July 1. And so through the budget process, we've made that change, and we'll have a contract with the Midway Fire Department. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Kyle?
Thank you.
Agenda item number 13 is a resolution authorizing an increase to the construction contingency for the Smith Reynolds Airport Terminal renovation project. James Anderson from our General Services Department will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you does increase the contingency for the Smith Reynolds Airport project in an amount not to exceed $164,452 to cover unforeseen costs due to subgrain conditions not being as expected for the asphalt pavement. The design called for aisle long to mill three inches of asphalt and replace with new asphalt. And when they did the first area of milling, discovered that the asphalt was not three inches thick, and it also was directly on the dirt and did not have a stone sub base underneath of it. Due to not knowing how widespread the issue could be, aisle long has provided a unit rate, and this amount assumes that we have to do the six-inch excavation and placement of ABC stone over the whole area. So if conditions are better than anticipated, we'll have some money coming back to us. If not, we'll use that full amount. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for James?
Thank you.
Agenda item number 14 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the agreement with Mark Bodell, PC, a North Carolina professional corporation, treating as the key as legal services for in-rem foreclosure legal services. And B is for mortgage-style foreclosure legal services. Mike Pollak, our interim tax assessor collector, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. These two resolutions are for amendments for two separate contracts. Both of these contract amendments involve property tax foreclosure, and both are with the same vendor. One of the hardest items tax has to predict budgetarily is a foreclosure program. Depending on the item, all or most of the costs associated with these accounts are able to be billed back to the property that is in the foreclosure proceeding. For example, in the current fiscal year, over 85% of the costs associated with foreclosure accounts have been recovered as revenue through the foreclosure process. Effectively, your approval of these two amendments shifts $70,000 from one contract to another, making the in-rem contract not to exceed amount $44,500, and the mortgage-style foreclosure contract not to exceed amount $480,000. foreclosure contract not to exceed amount $480,000 for the current fiscal year. These amendments do not change the not-to-exceed amounts for the upcoming fiscal year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mike. Good.
Agenda item number 15 is Mike's as well. It's a resolution authorizing execution of a contract to provide services for print processing and mailing services.
This resolution authorizes execution of a contract to provide services for print processing and mailing services for both the Tax Administration Department and the Board of Elections. A request for proposals was issued directly to 42 businesses and was also advertised on the city, county, and state purchasing websites and in the Winston-Salem Journal. Ultimately, four bids were received by the deadline, and only two vendors met the qualifications established therein and were deemed responsive bidders. The lowest bidder was the Masters Touch LLC, which happens to be our vendor on a current contract. You'll notice that the contract amount is actually lower than the bid amount. The reason the amount is lower is that the reappraisal notices were included in the RFP for pricing, however, is not anticipated that a reappraisal will occur with the next, within the next three years. If the commissioners so choose to have the Tax Administration Department to conduct a reappraisal before the contract expires, the bidders are on record for what the cost of these notices would be. I'm happy to answer any questions.
It's probably safe to assume that nobody's interested in another reappraisal anytime soon. So that's good. Any other questions for Mike? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 16 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Wake Forest University Baptist Medical Center for Medical Director Services at the Forsyth County Department of Public Health. Our health director, Joshua Swift, will brief this item.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Forsyth County Department of Public Health Consolidated Agreement with the Department of Health and Human Services requires that we have a physician who's licensed in North Carolina to provide regular medical consultation. This contract provides medical consultation for our OBGYN services, infectious disease, and laboratory services. It's a three-year agreement from July 1, 2025, to June 30th, 2028. The total is $582,912, or $194,304 per year. Formal bids were solicited through the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Pursuing Department, and Wake Forest University Baptist Medical Center was the lowest responsive bidder and the organization that currently provides our medical consultation, and they've been doing that for 10-plus years. Any questions?
So Novant did not submit a bid?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for Joshua? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 17 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the agreement with Whole Logic Sales and Service. Nicole Pritty, our Assistant Public Health Director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Department of Public Health is seeking approval to amend the current contract in place with Whole Logic Sales and Service LLC to continue services and support for the molecular testing equipment used in our public health laboratory for STI testing. The public health department currently leases laboratory instrumentation and purchases reagents for testing from Whole Logic Sales and Service LLC at a cost of $425,000 per year. We are currently completing a formal request for proposals for laboratory instrumentation. However, this process is not expected to be completed until July 2025. While the bidding and review process continues and during any potential transitory period between vendors, Whole Logic Sales and Service LLC has agreed to continue to provide services on a month-to-month basis. Our request is to be able to continue to use our existing contract with Whole Logic through September 30th, 2025, at a cost not to exceed $106,500, bringing the total of the contract to $531,500.
Any other questions for Nicole, or any questions? Thank you.
Agenda item number 18 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Custom Data Processing, Inc. to provide software, record-keeping, and workflow system services through the Department of Public Health Environmental Health Division. Daniel Lemons, our Environmental Health Director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Environmental Health Division of the Department of Public Health requests to enter into a three-year contract for software services for Custom Data Processing, Inc., CDP, in the amount not to exceed $152,284.40, beginning July 1, 2025. CDP provides a full platform of software for use in the Environmental Health Division, including record access, work ticket generation, and tracking, revenue tracking, and service logs. CDP is currently in use at the Department of Public Health and maintains prior-year records and current service tickets for the past 19 years. Environmental Health received three informal bids and have chosen the lowest bidder. I'll answer any questions, if I may.
Any questions for Daniel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 19 is a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with Proprio LLC for telephonic written and virtual interpretation services. Denise Price, our deputy county manager, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So we have an agreement currently with Proprio to do interpreter services across Health and Human Services, and we've had an increased need for this. We also have onsite, in-person interpreters, but they're not available for all languages. So this agreement is to get us through the end of the contract agreement, hopefully, with adequate services to meet need. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions for Denise? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 20 is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract with MCCI LLC to provide Laserfish email automation services. Chantel Williams and Krista Smith from DSS will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Madam Manager. I am seeking approval to execute a cloud solution contract with MCCI and with DSS. The contract offers additional efficient solutions to our existing Laserfish system by providing a public-facing form that allows customers to submit their verifications directly to Laserfish via the cloud instead of through an email. In summary, this will allow us to sunset a system that we put in place during COVID and offer a more efficient way to receive verifications for our customers. We are asking you to approve us up to, or enter into a contract not to exceed $58,745.
I take it there's no one else that can do that, another bidder for the Laserfish? There, there's no, there's no one else that's kind of in that business?
I'm going to let Krista come up.
That's correct. Currently, it's managed through Microsoft Outlook, and it's a very inefficient process. Our document management system is Laserfish, so MCCI is the only sole provider of our Laserfish contract.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead.
Are there any security implications to moving this service to the cloud?
We have somebody from MIS. That's actually why we're looking at the cloud.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. There is not a security concern with this contract as written from MCCI with our move to a cloud-based system. And that is part of the reason that DSS is pursuing this is for security reasons.
What are the security implications of, of the move? Why is it an improvement over vulnerability in the current system?
Our current Laserfish system is housed here onsite in our servers. The request was for the ingestion piece, to bring documents that had not been securely scanned directly on premises. I believe we are all familiar with what happened last year with, just up the street with our neighbor. Our request to DSS was, if we go through MCCI and their cloud-based system, let's shift the security purposes, all incoming documentation to them, and then to our system.
Do, do we have any increased risk of losing data in a security breach? Losing, losing access to critical data for making individual applicant decisions, for, you know, reporting for financial purposes, whatever?
That risk would be on MCCI in the event that there was a breach in their cloud.
So, you know, the risk, the liability is with them, but in terms of impacting operations?
Yes.
Is there any shift in risk? Any?
There is a shift in risk in operation.
Is there any shift in the likelihood, the vulnerability, to hacking?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'm not enough of a security expert to know how to phrase the question precisely the first time.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Agenda item number 21 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with the Resource Company to provide temporary employment services for one-stop early voting and election support at the Forsyth County Board of Elections. Tim Suji, our elections director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am presenting a resolution to execute a two-year agreement with the Resource Company, Incorporated, in the amount of $1,814,808 for providing temporary employment services for early voting workers, election staffing, and office staffing support. The Board of Elections requires seasonal employees to not only staff the various early voting locations, but to supplement our office staffing needs, which is more so the case now than ever with the recent implementation of SB 382. This law change now mandates a shortened window for approved absentee ballots to be tabulated by election night, and all approved provisional ballots to be researched, disposition, and scanned by the third day of election day. This will require more manpower than ever before in order to comply with the new law. Additionally, I do want to mention a separate law change, which is SB 1064, which now transitions all municipal elections to partisan elections. And by doing so, that then opens up the possibility of primary, having a primary and a second primary election. So it now increases the number of elections that our county will have to administer in odd number of years. Our department conducted an informal procurement process and received bids from nine different service providers. Two of the nine companies met the minimum acceptable qualifications, which included the Resource Company Incorporated, based in Winston-Salem, and the Greer Group Incorporated, based in Raleigh. In comparing the pricing information provided, the Resource Company offered the lowest with the 33% markup and the Greer Group with the 33.7% markup. Based on pricing and the evaluation of the selection criteria, it is the recommendation of the Board of Elections that a contract be awarded to the Resource Company. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Any questions for Tim?
Related question. Under either of the laws that you referenced, the changes, are there any changes anticipated to the, the length of the early voting period? The rules under which the county boards of elections set the number of sites for early voting? Anything that could affect our budget of that, in that regard?
Not with those two law changes. So as it stands, it's maintaining status quo. We have a 17-day early voting window. With the county board of elections having the discretion to decide on the number of locations and the locations of those sites.
And the board will be deciding presumably sometime later this year regarding the number and the location of sites for early voting?
Yes. So the plan is hopefully to have the board make that decision for the 2026 primary election sometime around October or November.
So we'll know what the budget implications are around that time?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, one quick question. If, if you were speculating on the cost of this, the additional, the shortening the window on absentee ballots, my memory of reading that and when it passed was that these are pretty special, a little more specialized, a little more training required. And are we having to keep folks on for a longer period of time? Or these are people out of the, the company will provide us, train people to do those extra parts. It's just a matter of during that window, we'll have to have extra people.
Right. That's, that's primarily it, is the need for additional manpower, the numbers. Our goal is to utilize the precinct officials, the chief judges, and the folks that have the expertise and the knowledge in conducting elections to assist us with this process. Now, for the absentee process, that will require in sort of additional staffing internally in the office.
Well, that's what I was getting at, is the intern, is the, is the, what we have to do internally that goes beyond what we normally staff.
Right.
I'm trying to get at extra costs.
Yeah.
I mean, I want to kind of know, I want, I'd sort of be great if we could articulate, this is what this change is costing us.
Right.
To shorten this, all this window. Because that's the, that is my, so it is being extended beyond the window of the absentee ballot counting that's going to other people additionally, that we're going to have to employ and have for longer periods of time.
Yes. So first off, I do want to thank you, Dr. Martin, for speaking on our behalf to our local legislative delegation on this particular matter. To answer your question, just to give you context, last year, 2024, in a presidential general election, we had a staff of 10, a combination of full-time and temporary staffing to handle the tabulation scanning of absentee ballots on election night. We still had a remainder of 3,000 absentee ballots yet to be scanned, and it would, it would be near impossible to have just the 10 to scan those additional 3,000 by election night. The law previously allowed us to have supplemental absentee meeting after election day, which afforded us additional time that a staff of 10, a team of 10, could accommodate and handle that, that workload. So by bringing in additional staffing, that will help us in complying with that shortened window.
Yeah. I'm just trying to get at the, the impact, the additional cost.
Yeah.
Of meeting this requirement. And particularly, as we get into, the partisan side of this will also add on the potential primaries on municipal elections, and there's always a potential runoff issues if you get into that. But I, I'm just.
I would also like to point out, Dr. Martin, and you, you actually mentioned this in one of the budget workshops, you questioned why our department's budget was somewhat comparable to last year's budget, when, when last year's budget was for a presidential general election. So that point in itself demonstrates sort of the budgetary implications of these law changes.
Good. I appreciate that. Now, any other questions for Tim?
Actually, don't appreciate it being said to us. Don't appreciate that. I appreciate your explanation.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 22 is Tim's as well. It's a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Salem One, Inc. to provide poll book printing and packaging services.
So this resolution authorizes the execution of agreements between the Board of Elections and Salem One Incorporated in the amount of $113,402.71, ending in June 30th, 2026. This is to provide printing and packaging services of the poll books that are used to check in voters at the polling places on election day. This contract requires a local printing company that is capable of printing these unique poll books that require specialty paper stock, high-volume digital processing, binding, and delivery within a 12-hour deadline. So the reason for the short window is because we can't send the data to the print company until early voting has ended on the last Saturday before election day. And so then we have a quick turnaround to have the books delivered to us the very next day on Sunday, so that we can quality control and prepare the books for delivery to the 108 polling places by Monday. The local proximity of the company is equally important in case of any misprints or the need for the printer to deliver any reprints to us. Salem One in Kernersville was the lone bidder for this contract. They have provided printing services to the Board of Elections for the past seven years, and they have consistently met our needs. So it is the recommendation of the Board of Elections to award this contract to them. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Questions for Tim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 23 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Arc Angels Transit, Inc. to provide a microtransit service to county residents for employment-related transportation. Andrea Sheets from our Community and Economic Development Department will brief this item.
Thank you. May I take both items?
Yep, let me read 24. It's a resolution awarding sub-applications and contracts for transportation assistance for elderly and disabled residents.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Our first item today is an agreement for our employment transportation service. This one is a program that our office operates and take an application for them, a contract out for the transportation service. It's an employment transportation program to and from work. For an update on this program, in the past year, we have provided 1,964 rides to 34 different individuals, all entirely funded from a grant from NCDOT. That program is at capacity. Those 34 individuals are who we have served compared to our 102 applicants for that program. So this was a seared procurement process. Arc Angels was the lowest bidder. You can see that compared to Support Systems, who was our previous awardee, and others who had a minimum that rendered them fairly expensive, given our. who had a minimum that rendered them fairly expensive, given our average trip length. Arc Angels is a different provider than normal, but I have already been working with Jackie, the owner there, and she's, and her team seemed great to work with and onboard with most of our processes, and we are working out any differences. And then our elderly and disabled transportation program, this one is a little bit different. It's both sub-allocations to organizations who are already providing services for this population and a contract with more taxi cab type transportation services to refer eligible individuals and give us a little bit of flexibility to meet the community's demand. This program in the past year has provided 7,106 trips to everything from medical appointments, employment, other essential trips to the grocery store, prescription pickup, et cetera. So any questions on these?
Yes. Go ahead. Now, Arc Angels Transit is new to us as a provider, is that correct?
They are new to this program. They are not new to the county. Their medical transportation services have had a contract with DSS for a little while. That one is well over $75,000, and they are headquartered in Greensboro, but have a team dedicated solely to Forsyth operations.
All right, so we have experience with their safety, reliability, entitlements?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
On the item 24, which is all that series of contractors where there's a whole bunch of them being sort of approved at once, is, and you actually get it down to, you actually narrowed it to five.
Yes, sir.
In that piece. And they're really disparate in terms of what, I mean, in the cost, I mean, in what you end up paying. And I'm a little, I guess, well, I don't know. I don't know what the volume is that we, I mean, to get it down to fewer companies and a better price points would really make sense. I mean, I realize it's kind of, I'm trying to look at the motivation to make sure we're getting the best prices this, when we're actually administering it during the year and this flows through this money from the state dollars on that.
So the elderly and disabled transportation one is a little different. This one is not a direct kind of taxi cab service that we're looking for. The way this grant has been administered in the past, this is only our office's second year administering it, was really a sub-allocation process meant to subsidize the operations of a lot of groups that were automatic, that were already providing the service. That's why we fund both Shepherd Centers and Monarch. And so we are, this grant is a large portion of those organizations' funding, and they are effectively providing transportation for the target population. They have that reputation in the community, and people are comfortable and trust with them. And frankly, our office and staff don't have the capacity to manage the full intake and operation of this program. And they also, because they're a nonprofit, sometimes use volunteers to provide this transportation. So that's why they are sometimes below the private provider rate. But it is very helpful to have a couple of private providers under contract who, when our office gets a call and say, we hear you all fund these rides, how can I get one? That sort of thing, we have folks to refer them to. So it's a little bit of both a grant sub-allocation and a contract for service provider, but they all have to happen in the same procurement process.
Is just $45 a trip is a flat fee kind of issue?
Yes.
When there are others that are mileage-based? And it seems to be, maybe if we changed our specs to where we're only going to accept mileage-based quotations, you know, to kind of get at sort of, which controls it a little differently. And it just strikes me that there's, I mean, I appreciate, I think they do great work, and I think they're reliable, and they get a lot of volunteers who work with them, and it's handled, it's just, you know, and I don't say how Monarch, Monarch is doing it for $0.45 a mile. I mean, and they ought to be like the number one, you know, vendor. I mean, they're only 3,765, maybe they just don't have the capacity.
Well, Monarch is, that's a program specifically for individuals with intellectual and disabled disabilities, or intellectual and developmental disabilities. And so they apply, their allocation is more like a subsidy, so their $0.45 a mile is what they calculate in with their program. And so it's for their participants, and it's a little bit more of a subsidy for their operation, similar to Shepherd's, both the Shepherd Centers, where they're already serving that target population. And the way that the grant regulations read is everything has to be in a flat rate of either per mile, per trip, or per hour. And so that has to include all of their costs, direct and indirect. So for nonprofits, that number is a little bit holistic and may not be the actual cost of transportation, but it's what they have to charge. This one's tricky.
Well, yeah, you mentioned per mile is acceptable, and they just have to adjust it properly. They have to adjust what the per mile rate is.
Okay.
But it just strikes me as a, and I hear you on the Monarch part, it's clearly an added subsidy piece, something, it's really not a bid, per se. Yeah, it's, every year, I'm always a little frustrated with this, and I mean, I just think it's, the job gets done, but I'm not so sure it's getting done at the most efficient, in the most efficient way. I mean, if the job can get done, I think it probably gets done pretty well. And I guess if we're going to be happy with that and don't care about it, the price, then we can be happy. But I probably think there's probably better price points on that. Anyway, I'm done. I just kind of wanted to air that out. Maybe you can think about that, maybe propose to them a year in advance, what if we went to mileage? Next year, we do this, if we do it per mile, can you start thinking about how, which, how you'd structure a bid on that to cover your, what needs to be covered?
Absolutely. I'll send that out.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Andrea? Thank you.
Agenda items 25 through 30 are all Chelsea Swames and General Services, and I'll just introduce each one individually. Chelsea, agenda item number 25 is a resolution authorizing a purchase order for the purchase of one ambulance unit to Spartan Fire and Emergency Apparatus, Inc.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Board. This item does authorize the purchase of one Deamer's MX-170 Ford E450 gasoline ambulance with power load and graphics. The purchase price will be $287,516 per the Houston-Galveston Area Council contract, which we have used in previous ambulance purchases. And EMS staff sought out this purchase and to use this contract in an effort to expedite the timeline in which we would receive the unit, given that we are still experiencing a shortage on ambulances. And this will be a replacement unit for EMS. It will not be a net new unit. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and then EMS staff are here as well to answer any questions.
Questions for Chelsea?
I may have missed what you said, but is this by chance the replacement for the ambulance that was involved in the head-on collision on Silas Creek?
I don't believe they've identified the unit that they're going to replace at this time.
Other question? Oh, we got an explanation.
That's correct. We haven't identified which unit we're going to replace yet. I think we're waiting on risk management and the legal proceedings that are going on with that unit before we make a decision.
Well, for that particular ambulance, would her insurance not, would it reimburse us for the ambulance?
I don't know the answer to that question just yet. I think we're still waiting on a lot of answers.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Agenda item number 26 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract for card access control updates at the Forsyth County Government Center.
This item is to approve a contract with A3 Communications, Inc. for access control installation services here at the government center to include installing 18 card readers as well as upgrading our access control system to the latest version. This item was bid by City County Purchasing with responses being due on Thursday, May 22nd, and we did receive three responsive bids by the deadline with A3 Communication being the low bid at $74,640.39. And the readers that are going to be installed will go on floors one, three, four, and five. And just as our little background on this, the, these upgrades are a result of a security assessment that was done in 2023, as well as discussions with departments on their needs, and this will be funded with the already established project for government center security upgrades. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Agenda item 27 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract for elevator and escalator maintenance services for various Forsyth County building locations.
This item is to approve a contract with Schindler Elevator Corporation for elevator and escalator maintenance services here at all Forsyth County facilities, and the vendor would provide preventative maintenance as well as our on-call and as-needed repairs. And these are services that cannot be provided by in-house staff. We don't have staff trained to provide that. This was also bid by City County Purchasing. We held a pre-bid on May 12th, which two vendors attended, and responses were due on May 20th. We received one responsive bid by the deadline. We did receive one non-responsive bid as well. The one responsive bid was obviously Schindler Elevator Corporation. The contract term would be for three years, beginning July 1st of 2025, ending June 30th of 2028. Year one would be $127,048. Year two would be $132,116. And year three would be $137,394, for a total not to exceed of $396,558. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you.
Agenda item number 28 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract for janitorial services for various Forsyth County locations.
This item is a, to approve a contract with the A+ Group LLC for janitorial services at different Forsyth County facilities. These janitorial services will include the labor as well as equipment for 10 locations, including the new agriculture building once it opens. And then we may need to amend the contract to remove the existing ag building, just depending on what happens with that building once we move over to the new one. The county will provide supplies to include chemicals and soap and paper products, though, so the vendor will not be providing that. This was bid by City County Purchasing with responses being due on Tuesday, April 29th. We received eight responses by the deadline. Two were considered non-responsive, and one was actually rescinded by the vendor. They realized they made a pretty substantial error. It will be for a three-and-a-half-year term, beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2028. Year one would be $354,971.23. Year two would be $358,520.94. Year three would be $362,106.15. And year four, which would just be for the six months, would be $182,863.60, for a total not to exceed of $1,258,461.92. And you will notice that this is not the low bid. The low bid is from the current vendor, which is, quite honestly, is not providing reliable and quality service. Since being awarded the contract in 2020, they've really struggled, to the point that in 2024, you all approved to amend their contract to reduce the scope and remove 11 buildings. So those 11 buildings have been contracted out with different vendors, and that really doesn't seem to have helped the current vendor. They still seem to struggle, and what's happening is county staff are then forced to come in and complete the tasks that have been missed by the contract vendor in order to maintain the clean and presentable environments for our staff and as well as our public. So therefore, we are recommending to award to the A+ Group LLC, which again is the second lowest bid, who is a North Carolina MWE firm, and they are also the current provider at the courthouse. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So that was one of them. So you've had good experience with the courthouse part?
Yes, sir.
And the second part, and so are they local, by the way?
They're from Durham.
Durham.
Mm-hmm.
And the final question, we had a lot of discussion with the school district, I guess, a year and a half ago, well, a year, about a year ago, in their budget cycle. And they had gone through, because they have a whole bunch of buildings. I'm curious who their vendor is, because apparently in the meeting we were at, they were speaking favorably of their vendor, and I'm just, I don't even know who it is. And if you could, actually, if you could find that out and email me who their vendor is on that, I'd, I'm just, I'm just more curiosity to see if they even bid on this, on this project. Because wherever it is, if it's, you know, just like, if Durham, for coming in for their A+ services, they're here, so that means they have a little, they have a toe hole, they have a, you know, they've cultivated some relationships and workforce kind of issues here. I'm just kind of curious about that.
Sure. I'll ask.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Agenda item number 29 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract for solid waste disposal services for various Forsyth County locations.
This item is to approve a contract with Waste Industries LLC, doing business as GFL Environmental, for solid waste disposal services, so dumpsters and trash at Forsyth County facilities, and they will provide all the dumpsters as well as the removal and disposal of the trash. This is a little bit different than what we've previously done. Currently, we have multiple contracts, but each department kind of manages their own and does their own thing. We have different vendors, we have different pricing structures and a lot of invoices. So this consolidates all of the locations onto one contract to optimize our efficiency and hopefully get better pricing through economies of scale. This was bid with, by City County Purchasing, with responses being due on May 21st. We did receive five responses with Waste Industries LLC being the low bid. Year one of the contract will be for $127,560.64. Year two would be $130,071.44. And year three would be $132,623.87, for a total of $390,255.95. So if you look at the table of their, the price proposal that they submitted, they completed the table that we had, as well as they submitted information on how on-call as-needed services would be priced, which was not included in their table. Tanglewood Park especially has a lot of on-call services just due to their operations. So our staff worked with the park staff to kind of project out what those costs would be for the on-cost. And then we added $2,000 each year for any additional services that we may need or any adjustments that we may need to make to the facilities. And we combined that total with the total on the table, and that's how we arrived at the total not to exceed amount. This would be for a three-year term, beginning July 1st of 2025, ending on June 30th, 2028. And we are very excited about the possibility of increased efficiency and just one contract to manage. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
So is it cheaper than what we're doing now?
We expect so.
Did we achieve the efficiencies that you hoped?
Yes, we expect so, based on current actual spends. Budget ran a report for us, and so based on those spends, we expect to, yes, it won't be eye-popping, but it will be a savings.
Okay, not eye-popping, but then, okay. Any other questions?
Just a comment. I've seen some presence of GFL Environmental out in the community. I note that the two big national firms, Republic and Waste Management, were both higher up in, you know, Waste Management being the high bidder, as opposed to the low bidder. So you're comfortable with the track record of GFL in reliability?
For what we know of it, yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
Agenda item number 30 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract for an onsite fleet-related inventory management service.
So this item is for the onsite fleet inventory management service with Genuine Parts Company doing business as NAPA Auto Parts. A little bit of an overview of our fleet management. The staff consists of one automotive services manager, which is vacant, one administrative assistant, one fleet supervisor, three senior automotive technicians, four automotive technicians, and one of those is also vacant. Since this was last brought to you, I wanted to show the increase in our active vehicles. We now have 738 active vehicles, so that's a slight increase over what you last saw, about 2%. We also wanted to show you the fuel consumption, since you were last brought this item. So year-to-date for FY '25, we have consumed 576,676 gallons of fuel, which again is an increase since the last time you saw this. And then our average age of vehicles is about 10 years old. So we have more vehicles since you last saw this. We, we're driving more, we're consuming more gasoline, and our vehicles aren't very new. On December 21st, you all approved a contract with Genuine Parts Company doing business as NAPA for this onsite fleet inventory management service to begin March 1st of 2024 and end on June 30th of this year. And I will say thank you. And I will say thank you for that. That has been a huge help and just allowed our division to address some inefficiencies and issues that we were seeing. And that's been especially helpful as we have not been fully staffed in our automotive service division. So again, thank you for that. Some of the benefits that we have seen since starting the service is, again, increased efficiency, especially when it comes to processing invoices. Previously, when we were purchasing the parts ourselves and managing that inventory, we would see, you know, 2,000 invoices, because we get an invoice for each order. With this service, we have 12 invoices. We have one per month for everything we purchase. We've eliminated our obsolete inventory, because we aren't purchasing things, so we don't have parts sitting on a shelf that we may or may not have the vehicle anymore where you would use that part. We've also decreased costs related to our tire purchases and disposal due to some arrangements that NAPA already has negotiated. We estimate that would be about $1,000 a month savings for tire removal and disposal, whereas we were having to actually pay a vendor to come in and do that previously. As well as, we're saving about $25 on delivery fee for tires every time they come and drop something off, which again, we were having to pay that when we were making the procurement ourselves. Our staff also have access to NAPA's training courses at no cost to the technician, so that's about a $200 savings per course for technician. And the technicians have attended about 15 courses already this year, so they're absolutely taking advantage of that resource. And then we've also seen an increase in productivity for the technicians, because NAPA staff are onsite and really managing that inventory very thoroughly, and they have an immense network of different partners to where they can source parts. So we have a quicker turnaround time on when we are able to get those parts. So just a little overview about the service and planned pricing. We do receive what's called NAPA jobber acquisition price for NAPA-branded parts. And if you recall, that was about a 29% average savings over the parts prices compared to what we were paying with our previous vendor. And it's also about a 22% average saving on the NAPA parts if we were to buy the parts ourselves outside of the service agreement from NAPA. So if we were to go back to buying it ourselves, this jobber acquisition price saves us about 22%. Then we pay NAPA's costs for non-NAPA products, then we pay a 10% management fee, and then operational costs for one onsite staff are passed on to the county. So for comparison, if, again, using what we have purchased this fiscal year, we've received invoices for nine months, so July through March. I wanted to show you, if, if we used NAPA's, they call it their 90-74 government pricing, again, if we were to take on this inventory management ourselves, we would be eligible for that type of pricing. So based on what we have spent already this fiscal year, we would have spent $442,016.41 on parts. Then we would also have had to factor in the cost to dispose of tires, because we would no longer be eligible for the arrangements that NAPA has worked out, because we would not have their onsite service anymore. So that would be a $9,000 that we would have to add back in and pay. Then we would have to pay delivery fees, so if you estimate one fee per week for nine months, that's about $900. And then we would have to pay for training for staff if we wanted to provide training to staff. We likely would not pay for 15 courses if we were having to pay it, but if you factor one course for staff, that's about $1,200. So if we, all of that factored in for nine months, we would have spent about $453,116.41. Since we have our onsite inventory management, we have spent $394,743.90 on parts. We've then spent $91,236.69 on the operational costs and management fee. That's a combination of those two. So the total we have spent under this contract is $485,980.59. So you see there's a difference. We have spent more money. However, if we were to go back to managing this inventory ourselves, not only would we lose the efficiencies and the productivity, but we would also have to hire a staff person.
Have to hire what?
We would have to hire an additional staff person to manage all of that, because we would have to go back to processing thousands of invoices a year and having somebody to make sure the inventory is there and track it. So the total net impact to the county would be more, if, we expect it would be more, if we went back to doing this ourselves and just use their, their quote, "government" pricing. So with that, we are requesting to, to enter into another one-year term with Genuine Parts Company doing business as NAPA Auto Parts for, beginning July 1st of this year, ending June 30th of 2026, for a total not to exceed amount of $704,550. That does represent a 5% increase over the FY '25 amount. And that's really just because our fleet has grown, as well as we've also seen a few tariffs be applied already. We're hoping that that does not continue. And we would maintain the jobber acquisition pricing on the NAPA parts, as well as we would still have the operational costs pass through to us and the 10% management fee. And this would be under the Sourcewell contract. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Speak about the Sourcewell contract a little bit more, because I'm assuming that, I'm assuming they're bidding, there are a few more people than NAPA that make parts. And so I'm assuming that this, they're bidding all across that, and the Sourcewell contract against the other, and that and the other, this is like a large, I'm not, I'm concerned, what, how do we know that NAPA is, I mean, in the Sourcewell contract, in that, aren't they bidding with other people? And don't they pick out the best prices for combinations of things that you buy and whatever else? I mean, I'm a little, I'm, I don't, there's no competitive bidder here in this process. And I know there are lots of other vendors who make parts.
Sure. So we did not put it out for a bid like was done when it was initially brought to you. What was found then is that NAPA ended up being the low bid, and they actually bid their Sourcewell pricing. So the Sourcewell contract is actually, they call it the integrated business solution. So it's not just for parts, it's for the whole collective service.
So Sourcewell does not look at other competitors in parts? They're just, I don't know, I guess I'm, I'm probably a little confused with the Sourcewell contract, what that means.
So there are Sourcewell contracts that are just for parts, like if we wanted to go and buy the parts on our own. And then this contract specifically is for the, the service aspect, the integrated, they call it IBS, Integrated Business Solution, which includes the parts, the onsite staff member, and the management, and the tracking, and all of that.
It has nothing to do with competitive vendors for the parts? In other words?
It's a service. So yeah.
No, I understand this, so I understand that, but maybe I'm not speaking clearly about this. There are a lot of people who make fan belts.
Yes.
There's not just one vendor.
Correct.
And how do we know that we're getting, I mean, typically, there'd be some specs for the fan belts, the quantities, and that we use, and the kinds that we, and then we could literally bid that to all the, you know, the manufacturers of parts, and we could get sort of a combined, you know, best thing where you buy from multiple vendors. Or we could ask multiple vendors of parts to do the same kind of thing and compete with NAPA. I mean, I'm sure this is not the only type contract like this with other, with another parts. We were kind of experimenting with this before, because I asked these questions before. And now, now we've gone through 15 months, and we're still have, we still have no competition. We're just now deciding on a different way to do NAPA parts. You understand what I'm getting at?
I do, yes. I'm trying to think how to respond. So we didn't, yes, we didn't bid it out again, and we're using the Sourcewell contract because, because that's what they bid when we did bid it out.
May I?
Yes, please.
Suggest, it sounds like what you're saying is this is a combination of parts and services. You are getting the efficiency of having a, a vendor provide the management services and the bidding, or, you know, the, the competitive seeking of individual parts, instead of staff having to do a bidding process for fan belts and, you know, gizmos of various kinds within the auto part process. So it's a combined thing. And if we wanted to do a competitive bid, the appropriate thing to do might be to do a competitive bid after this year. Consider doing a competitive bid for a similar combined package from other vendors.
That's where I was getting at.
So, but we could look at that, we could do this for this year, and we could look at that for next year.
I think that's what we should have looked at this year, since we've been experimenting with this for already 15 months, basically.
Darren Redfield, our purchasing manager, I don't know if he had something to add.
So I want to speak to the Sourcewell and Omnia is the same way. So this is nationally bid, NAPA, O'Reilly, AutoZone, all those vendors participate in that contract. So they do give their best price, and then you select, so you have, you know, your OEM parts, you know, your Chevy's Dodge Ford, what, what they need. So they give a unit price for each of those, and then you're basically selecting which vendor you would choose to go with. If you want to go with NAPA, O'Reilly, or whatever, they're giving you a municipal discount based on the, the shelf price, so you're getting the government rate. Is NAPA's price better? It might be two cents better than O'Reilly. It's probably not worth looking at it. You're kind of buying in bulk, right? So once you choose NAPA, you're going with their bulk pricing based on your quantity. So it's been competitively bid across the country.
Well, that's what I originally thought that that meant. This was like a, one of these consortium bids, that we get that. But it strikes me as I, it's, I guess I'm kind of curious on, because I assume, for example, O'Reilly would offer, I mean, the issue of having the person onsite, I'm sure, I'm sure all of them will do that.
Yeah.
I'm sure everybody would do that.
That's probably, I'm guessing.
And so what I'm trying to figure out is...
Yeah, I'm not sure about the fleet management aspect of it, but...
I imagine they're all pretty smart on that.
Yeah, they are.
I can't imagine it's not available. And, and do we know that NAPA is better than all the others? And through, through Sourcewell should be telling us what the others are. And we ought to be able to talk to the others if they were the same or less, and, and then ask them to bid their, well, what's your management fee if you, if we hired you to come in and do this? I mean, it seems to me that, you know, yes, and I feel better, because I thought Sourcewell was a consortium, and that, and that they were bidding and you were getting competition there, and that's good, but I also felt like you could, you could switch, you could mix and match on some of the really expensive things that you buy, or things you buy a lot of, that you could do a little, because that's what they're doing. They're providing you this thing. They're not providing that you have to get all O'Reilly. They're just saying, we've done this and looked at all these things, right?
I imagine, though, once you go to the fleet contract and the service, then they're going to use, since they're managing that for you, they're going to pull from their NAPA.
Well, of course. But then you could ask also, O'Reilly, would you get all O'Reilly parts?
Yeah.
And we could see, kind of look at that, and they would have a fleet manager. And I'd also feel a lot better, I feel a lot better if we just reduced our positions by one. We've had a vacant position for a while. So when we're getting a position through this arrangement, maybe we just reduce our positions by one. But on your list, I think there are two vacant positions right now. And I don't know how long they've been vacant. You can go back to that. I think it was your first slide. I, I got the, I think, I got it.
We do have two vacant positions. One of them is actually the manager.
Yeah, right there. You got, you got the automotive services manager and the, and one technician vacancy.
And those are two, I mean, the technicians actually fix the vehicles, and, and we desperately need that. And the fleet manager would be helpful for Chelsea to get out of fleet, because she's our deputy general services director and has a lot of other responsibilities, a fleet manager.
What about the automotive, what the automotive services manager sounds exactly like what NAPA's providing?
Well, no.
No. The NAPA onsite person just manages the inventory. So the guys, once a vehicle comes in, they take a ticket up to the window, and that individual there takes the ticket and gives them the inventory, the parts that they need. Then that individual also maintains the inventory, ensures that we have adequate stock levels. If something needs to be ordered, they get all of that. Whereas the manager actually would have oversight over our personnel and ensuring that they are actually repairing the vehicles correctly. We have a host of other contracts that that individual should manage.
What does the fleet supervisor do? Who is he, he or she supervising?
The, the on-site, on-site, on the floor, with the guys on the shop, you know, answering questions, making sure that our body work, you know, things are getting taken to the body shops from accidents to get repaired. There are some of the vehicles that we can't do the on-site repairs, so he would coordinate getting the vehicles delivered there. He, he does a lot.
I don't want to get in the weeds. I've already in the weeds.
Chelsea, I think you've done a great job.
Oh, thank you.
Well, except we have no competition here, and I, I probably will vote against this without it.
That's correct.
So, that's good.
Mr. Chairman, I may make, or I guess ask a question, or... About a year or so ago, I can't remember precisely the time, that they come in with this, a different way of doing the part, getting the parts in this fleet service. And at the time, I don't recall, is, is this not working now? I don't recall all of the, many questions about it.
Except we've added to our cost.
Sir?
We just added to our cost. We're paying a premium to get this extra stuff. We're paying for it, extra.
May I ask, who, if anyone, is doing that coordination work now?
Coordination for?
For the, the parts inventory.
That's what NAPA does. That's what the onsite person does.
Yes, and are we using an onsite person now?
Yes.
Right. And if we were to terminate that and to hire someone for that position, do we have a ballpark figure on what that would cost in staffing?
I think it would really depend on, well, what we decided to hire, you know, I think if we hired, hired a fiscal tech, because it's largely tracking of invoices as well, I think that salary starts out around $42,000. And then, you know, you have the ancillary.
Yeah, plus benefits.
Well, my question is, who did it before we went with NAPA? Who was doing the parts inventory?
We, we had another position out there.
So we replaced a position with a NAPA person?
And so what was the, what were we paying for that previous position?
That I don't know. I think we, the position that we gave back last year for this, I think was like $50-some-thousand.
I kind of don't remember sort of asking that. I had these, we had this same conversation 15 months ago, and it was, okay, let's try it.
If I, if I may, in fiscal year '24, General Services did delete a position to cover a portion of this contract. At the, at the time, it was sort of a half-a-year pilot project, and it was a part-time position, a property specialist, a total amount of $26,457.
For a half-year.
That's, that was, it was a part-time position. That was the cost for the position for the full year.
The full year was a $26,000 person we gave up, and we pretty much added a, probably the equivalent of a $40,000 person at least.
Well, just ask the staff to provide what its cost from when we started this. It's new from, I don't know how old it is exactly, a year, year and a half old, maybe two. See, compare that cost to what we were doing before. And if we don't like this, we can consider changing it. That's all I know to do.
Yeah, I'd like, I would like to know that what that cost was in the, in the previous, I remember, wasn't this March of '24?
March of '24, yes, sir.
And here we are, and so we're, we're 15 months basically out, 15, 16 months. So if it was easy to go back and pull that same kind of thing, I, I'm confident, I think it's a lot better. I'm not disagreeing with you being better. I'm not disagreeing with its saving time, money, effort, and some of those, not saving the money, I don't think, saving effort. And I think we're getting, it's, it's easier to do, but I don't believe it's going to be cheaper. I'm certain it's not going to be cheaper.
Comment, if I may. It seems to me that we're getting better results for the cost of a county commissioner, and we'd be paying a lot more for the same high-quality, higher-quality results if we had to pay for a technician instead of a county commissioner. We were, you know, in terms of cost terms, we worked a lot cheaper than to tech people. So, you know, I think this is a good idea. I will support if it comes back in this form.
I have one other question. Before Thursday, could you find out if... I have one other question. Before Thursday, could you find out if any of the other vendors like O'Reilly and AutoZone or all these guys, whoever who does it, has their own line of stuff, if they offer the, the in-house sort of a technician services where they'll do your own person, where some, another vendor that offers the same thing that Napa's offering?
I will look into that.
That's in the Sourcewell contract.
I will look into that. Yes, sir.
If you want to get the best price, why don't you see if you can work a deal out direct with a manufacturer of the parts and get them?
Well, that's, then you're dealing with a lot of different manufacturers. But, but I figured, I figured General Service, I figured General Motors, and I think, I was thinking that they all could probably do the same kind of things. I actually was thinking that while she was talking.
I'll, I'll get you some information.
Agenda item number 31 is a resolution authorizing the fiscal year 26 purchase of pharmaceuticals by the Forsyth County Pharmacy. Rhonda Tatum, our interim behavioral health services director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This item seeks authorization to purchase pharmaceuticals for the Forsyth County Pharmacy for fiscal year 2026. As you know, or may know, the pharmacy purchases three types of medications. We purchase brand name, generic and over the counter. The county participates with an organization called MCAP Infuse, which is a collective purchasing agreement with the state of Minnesota and which all 50 states participate. What this collective agreement does is leverage the purchasing power of a larger volume of purchases, which in turn allows the county to buy brand name medications at a much lower price. MCAP Infuse has several wholesalers and historically, the county has purchased from Cardinal 110 LLC, who is also currently the state of North Carolina's vendor. In terms of brand name and over the counter medications, effort is made minimally to look at three wholesalers and purchase from the lowest one to get a better cost, at the lowest cost. This allows staff to stretch budgeted funds as far as possible. There is a not to exceed amount included of $2,680,285 for brand name and generic medications and $502,000 for over the counter medications, which includes naloxone and medications to treat opioid use disorder, both of which are funded using opioid settlement dollars. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Rhonda.
Thank you, thank you.
Agenda item number 32 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of cellular services and equipment. Joseph Sloop, our deputy CIO, will brief this item.
Good afternoon. So this resolution authorizes county departments to purchase cell services and equipment for fiscal year 26. And that would include AT&amp;T, FirstNet, T-Mobile, US Cellular and Verizon Wireless, as per North Carolina state contract 915A. Happy to answer any questions.
Got a similar kind of difficult question here.
Okay.
I'm kind of curious why we don't, because the state price contract locks in stuff for about a year. And usually if we were going to buy a single vendor and actually bid a single vendor, I believe we would get a much cheaper price. If, if we felt, I mean, if there were, if there were certain vendors, you know, certain cell phone providers that you cannot get service everywhere, we need to get them. You got hills and valleys. We got people going covering the whole county. But I suspect a single vendor, we, we would get a lot better price in a bid where the companies competed instead of using the state price contract.
Yes. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to argue that. One reason I know we use the state contract is so that we can purchase, the different departments can purchase through any of these different providers.
Why would we want to do that?
Coverage, services they have, like T-Mobile, for example, has better data plans. The data is actually stronger when you're out and about and you're using your tablet. The data is actually better. Their cell coverage might not be as good, but their data is better. And so each company is a little bit different in that aspect. And so that's why, you know, we've heard from different departments, what we tried to do was centralize it. Because what was happening before is each department was just going out and getting their own contracts with the different cell service.
Which is what they're doing.
And so what we've done is by doing this contract, MIS manages that, it allows the departments to go purchase what they need. But we have the management console piece. So we can help them with any kind of billing, if they need to audit any of the equipment or anything like that. And so it centralizes that piece under MIS. It allows the different departments to purchase from whomever they need to for their specific needs.
So, Mr. Chairman, what I will say about this, because I just had a department manager meeting and our theme for FY '26 is really trying to work on operational efficiency. And we talked about cell phones. And one of the things on cell phones is that, and Joseph was not in that meeting, Gary Kuntz was. But we really need to make sure, number one, we're using the lowest bidder unless there is not coverage. And so we will work towards that because right now, he is correct, for, for forever, departments can just select whatever cell phone services that they want. And I'll, you know, they love T-Mobile versus Verizon and there's no real analysis. And so our commitment is kind of trying to work towards streamlining that, making sure we're using the lowest bidder unless there are other various reasons. But again, there's some work that needs to be done. So similarly to what we've done with solid waste, we've kind of consolidated that, getting contracts in order. We're going to try to do that with cell phones and then some other items throughout the county.
So you promised by next year that, the next time we look at this, we're going to have a bid on this.
Mr. Chairman, you said I couldn't fix everything in year one. Year two's about operational efficiency. So yes, we're going to work on it this year too.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 33 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a service contract. It's a Black Card LLC for exterior painting services for the hangar, hangar located at 3820 North Liberty Street at Smith Reynolds Airport. Mark Davidson, our airport director, will brief this item.
All right. The airport department recommends awarding a contract, like she said, with Black Card LLC for exterior painting. This is the hangar that's across the street at North Liberty Street by the railroad tracks. To obtain the lowest price for services, we worked with Darren over at the City County Purchasing to advertise opportunity. Sealed bids were received until 1:00 PM on April 3rd. The county received the following three bids for a hangar project. Black Card was at $71,448. Taylor Made Services was at $99,828. And Worth Painting was at $118,786,000. Once the contract is executed, Black Card will have 60 days to complete the project. I don't think it'll get done by the time the terminal will be open, but we'll see. The, the paint brand will be Sherwin-Williams, which will protect the metal facility from corrosion and improve the aesthetics by matching the other hangar facilities like CH1 and CH2. And we did that Eps facility down the street. Since the bid, we have had discovered that some of the existing surfaces at 3820 contain lead. And the airport department worked with Black Card to modify the project to ensure proper removal when prepping the surface. This additional work added $6,503. So the whole, making the contract totaled $77,951.
Questions for Mark. Thank you.
Agenda item number 34 is Mark's as well. It's a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement with L3 Harris Technologies, Inc. at the airport.
All right. Automatic dependent surveillance broadcast is a system that provides accurate aircraft navigation and positioning. At Smith Reynolds Airport, we actually have an eight, we call it ADS-B land-based receiver and it's located in the attic where North State Aviation is our tenant. The system consists of electronics cabinet antenna that's up on the roof. And L3 Harris Technology is a company that provides this aircraft positioning service for the FAA. And the current lease with L3 Harris, it was executed back in 2011 and is set to expire on September 30th of this year. Both the airport department and L3 Harris want to continue the, the service and enter into a new lease with an annual fee to the county equating to $1,800 a year. The initial term of the lease is five years and will automatically renew for four additional five-year terms unless either party wants to terminate.
Any questions for Mark?
And 35 is Mark's as well. It's a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the lease agreement with Piedmont Propulsion Systems at the airport.
Yeah. If you're familiar with Piedmont Propulsions, they lease the facility at 4400 Lansing Drive. They've been in existence for over 70 years and currently have 53 employees that provide propeller maintenance and overall solutions for airlines and air cargo operators, militaries, governments and private operators. The current lease became effective back on July 1st, 2022, in order, in order to generate additional revenue to the airport and allow them to hire more employees. The county commissioners, you approved a project under Pago, funding up what we call the pit. It's a flooring we had to fill in of their existing facility. Designs are being finalized and amendment has been created to allow PPS to vacate the construction area and use existing warehouse across the street over by the railroad tracks. During construction, the rent would remain the same. Seven days after the certificate of occupancy is done, after they're filling in the pit, we'd issue a newly, and once we get a certificate of occupancy, they would, the annual rent would be increased from the current $238,366.60. The rent would go up to $297,031.32. And it'd be subject to CPI and fair market rental value adjustments, which are set forth in the current agreement.
I do have one question. I just, I, I actually just compared the increase in the cost of the lease from past to new one and just divided it into the $2 million cost of the work. It takes like 33 years to get, even get our money back on that.
Yeah, I can't do an ROI until we have the final construction. I'm hearing it's going to be under the $2 million budget. But what I did was, what they're paying for the current square footage and applied it to the new flooring they'll have, as well as the, there's going to be a little bit of underneath that we'll be able to lease to for storage. But that's why I did it based on the fair market of what, what the rent is now. I didn't do it on a cost recovery basis.
I, I got, well, and there's probably not just a whole line of people that lined up that would want to lease.
Yeah, and they, they have the building locked up.
That facility and they have been there.
And they're going to be hiring more employees, which we're excited about.
So I mean, I, it's a little different, but I was struck by that. And I feel, I feel a lot better if it ends up costing less than $2 million by several hundred thousand.
I couldn't hear that last part.
I said it'd be great if it cost less than $2 million.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Maybe several hundred thousand less would be.
That would be good.
Better. I got it. Thank you.
Agenda item number 36 is a resolution authorizing the county manager to solicit fair market value offers to purchase county-owned real property located at 3325 Silas Creek Parkway. Kirby Robinson, our community economic development director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. I'm going to rewind through my presentation that I inadvertently scrolled through there. I apologize. And I'll try and step through it rather quickly. I know it's been a long afternoon. As background on the Amos Cottage property, it's located on Silas Creek Parkway. It's currently leased to Wake Forest University Health Sciences and that lease expires at the end of September. The board has previously indicated its desire to sell that property. If you recall, we had a real estate update roughly four months ago, and that was part of it at the very end, that said, in general, the board seems to see that as surplus property. There are no other identified county uses for the property at this time. Profile of the facility is built 1975. It's been expanded several times, I think two additional times. It sits on 3.2 acres. It's approximately 37,000 square feet. So it's a large facility. In terms of use, it's well suited for medical office space, has approximately 94 parking spaces around it. So it's getting to the ratio of sort of light industrial property towards the medical office space. It does have a residential zoning classification on it. And Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but a potential buyer would really want to sit down with planning and work through what an appropriate zoning classification would look like at that building. And I think we put the condition at good to fair. It really depends on what you're talking about. I think Wake has done a nice job of cosmetically maintaining a lot of the property. What we did not see in there when we toured it, which was nice and what you, it's toward what you hope to see, or hope you don't see, is a lot of deferred maintenance on the capital side. So it looked like it was in relatively good shape. To orient you, of course, this is Novant to the left. This is actually Novant on the unimproved property here. Aworth Miller here in Silas Creek to the south. Here's a couple of pictures of just sort of what it looks like inside the facility. You really have a mix of sort of office and classroom spaces with some recreational areas and what appears to be just a really cool treehouse. Outside, walking areas and gardens, indoor gym. There's actually an old swimming pool in there, which doubles as a storage and file area. I don't think we're, should put water in it, from what I understand, but it is a sort of a neat amenity. So if the board does desire to sell the property, staff recommend declaring it surplus and directing the manager to solicit fair market value offers. As I understand it from the attorney, that's not a legally necessary step to declare it surplus. But it's really helpful to staff when we go and talk to potential buyers to have the board's direction of what you, what you want to see on the property, especially when we're establishing an offer period. I think what we would suggest and have been successful in is setting up a 90-day offer period, which, you know, folks can tell us, you know, who they are, what do they want to do with the property and what they're offering for it. And we always ask that they include, you know, if you're going to need to rezone it, tell us that. Be as detailed as you can in terms of your timelines. We'll present that to the board and then the board in its sole discretion can choose to advertise an offer for upset bids, again, if it chooses. And that's actually a picture of Amos Cottage I found when it was just finished, when it was built, 1975. It's really neat. So I'd have to answer any questions the board has.
Questions for Kirby.
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
Not about this.
Okay.
About two or three of them back. You, you can answer the question. Don't get in too detail. Just give me, tell me a time.
Okay.
How long have we been into this fleet agreement? Because you was a staff person that come in and went over all of that.
I'm not sure. I was hoping you'd remember that.
I just.
A year and a half. It sounds about right. I think it was March when we brought it to you before. I was impressed. You remember the, the month? So it's about a year and a half.
I was wanting to call on you a while ago. I didn't, Ms. Swaim, this not working good. It's not your fault. I don't know whose fault it is.
I am sure she'll tell me that.
But I wouldn't, something like that, I wouldn't forgot that, I don't think. Go, that's good. Thank you. I knew you'd know the answer.
I remembered. Thank you.
Agenda item number 37 is a resolution declaring certain county-owned personal property surplus and authorizing its disposition by public electronic auction utilizing Liquidity Services Operations LLC. Chelsea Swaim for General Services is back to brief this item.
So this item is to declare certain county-owned personal property surplus and authorize its disposition by public electronic auction with Liquidity Services Operations LLC via their GovDills platform. As a, just a recap, all of the fees are passed along to the buyer. We do not pay any commission or fees for these sales. Our last GovDills sale in March, actually, it was a very large sale and we got $84,581 off of that sale, which was great. It was also the first time that we had included vehicles on the sale. And so $49,000 of that was just for the vehicles that we sold. So that was a worthwhile venture that we are going to continue doing. And this, as you'll see on the attached list, this sale also has many vehicles. So we do attempt to reuse and repurpose things before we put them on the surplus list for you all to declare a surplus and sale. But these are the items that we do not see a need for, either for condition, lifespan of it, or just the uniqueness of it. So the sale, if approved, would begin on July 14th and run through July 28th. And then we would hold a viewing period by appointment from July 7th through July 18th. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Chelsea.
I, I may, you know, drop by and look at the 15 pallets of discarded library books. But I am curious, what is a rolling telephone? There are three of them listed here.
I, I do not know. I can ask staff. I have not looked at all of the, the items that are on here personally and laid eyes on them.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number 38 is Chelsea's as well. It's a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement with Humane Solutions Spay and Neuter Program for lease of county-owned real property located at 5570 Stermer Park Circle, the animal shelter.
This is to approve a lease agreement with Humane Solutions Spay and Neuter Program for 1,615 square feet of office medical space at the Animal Services Building at 5570 Stermer Park Circle to provide medical spay and neuter services to animals. It would be for a one-year term, beginning July 1st of 2025, ending June 30th, 2026. Both landlord and tenant would be able to terminate by providing a 90-day written notice. It would be a monthly rental of $2,960.83. The county would provide all the maintenance, all the utilities, the janitorial, except for the areas where the tenants are actually providing medical services. They would be responsible to clean that area. We would also allow them to use various surgical equipment and items, as well as some kennels. And Humane Solutions Spay and Neuter has been operating at the facility since May of '24. This just kind of changes the terms of the lease a little bit. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chelsea?
We have a good experience with their work.
year, so there was a little bit of startup time for them. They have increased the numbers of procedures they are performing for us on our, on the county-owned animals who we're adopting. You know, certainly, they, they've talked to us, and we're working with them to try to make sure that we're scheduling appropriately and maximizing that. I will just note, this is a little bit of change. The pilot program, they did not pay rent. They were providing 10 surgeries per week as a form of rent. This one, we're going to have a separate agreement, we'll pay them, they'll pay us, we're getting market value here for the rent.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda items 39 through 57 are appointments, and those are attached to your agenda items. Agenda item number 58 is a resolution approving refunds by the interim tax assessor-collector in the amount of $21,569. Agenda item number 59 is an order of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners in accordance with the general statutes for the collection of 2024 and prior year taxes effective July 7th, 2025. And 60 is an order for the collections of 2025 taxes effective July 7th. Essentially, what 59 and 60 is doing is 59 is Mike Pollak will roll off as the interim director. You all need to approve this order, and then 60 is giving the authority for the new tax assessor-collector, Amanda Markle. So just kind of some technicality there. 61 and 62 are reports. 61 is the April Human Resources Report, and 62 is the May Financial Report. And then we do have three added items, and apologies for that. Agenda item number 63 is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract with EPR Systems USA Inc. to utilize EPR fireworks records management software. Brock Smith, our deputy fire chief, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. I'm presenting to you today a contract with Fireworks EPR. This contract was placed out to bid. We did receive four bids, and EPR was the lowest bidder. If awarded, they will provide our records management system, not only for Fire Division, but also 14 of the volunteer departments. It's a three-year contract with an additional two years if approved. The first three years should not go over $425,140. The next two additional years, if they are chosen and approved, and everybody agrees to it, will be no more than $282,760. The first year is a little bit more, but that takes into account for fireworks coming out to do some training, to get everybody up to speed, because we do have some new features. The records management system will include our fire reporting system, our EMS calls for documentation. It will also include our inventory and maintenance, the fire departments can put all their equipment in, and they can also do their truck check-off. Their training platform, it will, they can document all their training, and it will keep up with that. They have certified training software for fire, medical, hazmat, HR, OSHA, that they can submit out to the departments or to the firefighters for them to do their training, online training, and then supplement it with hands-on. It also includes a scheduling software, so that they could, the fire chiefs can go in and keep up with their, who's working what day, and if they need to add additional staffing. Our CAD can push the times for the fire reporting and the EMS calls to make it a little bit easier. And then also for the Fire Division, it will include our inspection reporting system and also our investigation. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
One thing that, and I may have missed this, is it, yeah, which two, it says the management software for 14 of 16 fire departments?
Yes, sir.
I may not miss, what about, what's, what are the two that do not?
Yes, so the City of King is with ESO, and I think that's through Stokes County, and then Gumtree, since they are merging with Midway, they've combined their two, and that's through Davidson.
Got it, got it, good. I said, it's good, all, we're all using the same thing, except the two that actually have bases in other counties and have contracts with us.
Thanks for your work on this, Brock. Agenda item number 64 is a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of furniture for the Tanglewood Clubhouse project. James Anderson, our General Service, from General Services, will brief this item.
This item authorizes the purchase and installation of furniture for the Tanglewood Clubhouse from Store Office Environments, in an amount not to exceed $170,029.75, utilizing state contract 5610A pricing. $250,000 had been budgeted for the purchase and installation of furniture. Store's proposal utilizing the state contract pricing is approximately $80,000 under budget. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Just put in the same kind of category for, are there a lot of different manufacturers involved in this?
There are, there's, gosh, there's probably 100 different manufacturers, I bet, that's on that state contract.
Yeah, I mean, I was just trying to get, I was trying to get the same discussion we had about state price contract issues on cell phones. Usually get a lot better if you have one vendor that, you know, that does it. And I don't know anything about furniture for this facility, and what, how many different vendors there are, but safe price contract is a, is a not particularly economical issue.
So for the furniture, the way that it works is that when they put it out to the different furniture, the vendors, is that they will give a discount off of list price. And historically, what I've seen from our, our local furniture market, when we put stuff out to bid, is the state contract pricing is very competitive for the furniture. And then, in the instance of this project, we have a need to expedite the furniture, and so utilizing the state contract option to forego the lengthy process of doing the competitive bidding is in our benefit for this one.
Yeah, well, I think if they're, if the state price contract is offering a percent discount, that's a lot more competitive than simply bidding out, you know, the service kind of thing, so very different kind of way. So I'd say that probably works, I've not had that experience with it. Good, any other questions?
And Agenda item 65 is a resolution, let me see how it's actually named, resolution recognizing June 19th as Juneteenth National Independence Day in Forsyth County, and so we will recognize that on Thursday. And then the only other item we have, Mr. Chair, is our discussion items, which are the letters to Senators Bud and Tillis. Our attorney, Gordon Watkins, will just kind of briefly describe what this is, and then we also have our social services director, Krista Smith, who can provide some more specific information.
I'm sure you'd like me to go through an excruciating detail-by-detail review of this, but I won't do that. SNAP, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which used to be called Food Stamps, as you all know, is subject to the one big beautiful bill, H.R. 1, which it passed the U.S. House, and now the Senate is considering it. It would make a number of changes, which, which would have a profound effect on Forsyth County, not only the citizens of Forsyth County, but also Forsyth County government. North Carolina is one of 10 states where the counties are involved, not just the state, but the counties are the ones who administer the program. Here, it's predominantly federally funded, but the counties administer it. Part of our funding part is the administration, so we fund half of the administrative costs. This would shrink the federal share of that from 50% to 25%. Presumably, that 25% would be shifted to the county unless the state decided to jump in with that. So that, that's the first item here. The second one, and, and it's not listed here, but also what would happen starting in FY28 is that the actual cost of the program, which is now 100% federal, would start to be shifted to the states. And so the states would pay between 5% and 25% of the cost of the SNAP program, which would be a very, very large amount. I believe it said over the, they expected to save $128 billion through FY34, and that's starting in FY28, so that would be a huge expense right there. Then there'd be an expansion of work requirements, which would have to be administered by our staff to determine whether people were meeting those work requirements. And then it's a little bit arcane, but the last point is about the error rates. It would, it would make errors either on behalf of the recipients or on behalf of us administering it. It would be much tighter on any error, and we would be penalized, the state would be penalized for that. So for example, if the rest of the state had what was considered too high an error rate, Forsyth County could be penalized for that. And without further ado, I will ask Krista to come up, and she can correct anything I've misstated.
I don't know that there's really any significant corrections that I would make to the county attorney's information, but I do just want to point out that this is the first time ever in SNAP's history that the federal government is looking to establish a state match to the direct benefit costs, and so that is very significant. We have seen shifts in the past, we have not seen a precedence for the state to, to pick those things up, and so we definitely have some concern about what that would look like. It is based on the error rate, which is measured both with overpayments and underpayments. Currently, there is an amount that is exempted from that, it's around $56, I'm looking at my subject matter expert, but they are looking to reduce that. The House proposal is looking to reduce that to zero. So if they bring the threshold for error, errors down to zero, we expect to see the error rate increase, which also means we would expect to see the likelihood of the state having to contribute more funds to be more likely. And so I think that's the only thing I had to add in. Well, with the work requirements, I think it is significant to say that we already have work requirements, so there's already a process in place to look at that. What they are doing is expanding the years that fall under that, the age. Let me just check, so I'll make sure to tell you right. Currently, the able-bodied adults are covered up through age 54, and now they are looking to expand that up through age 64, so that would add an additional 10 years, so a significant number of the recipients of food stamps. And they are going to start to hold parents or guardians where all the children in the household are over the age of 10 to that same work requirement. So it is going to add an administrative burden in terms of who we need to verify. And those people would roll off if they're not meeting the work requirements, but what we also expect is that there would be some what we call churn, people who roll off because they don't realize that they have to submit this information, then they turn back around, and we have to re, re, redetermine them for their eligibility when they do turn that application in. So then it's kind of like double processing, processing them to terminate them, and processing them again once they turn the information in. And there is not, to my knowledge, any additional funding to help us with this administrative mandate that's being added.
Mayor?
Yeah. Just make sure I.
Available for any questions.
Correctly understand. So the provisions regarding SNAP in the bill as currently written, you know, would, basically, once, once your children are over 10, then you're expected to, what, leave them at home while you go out and volunteer? So you're not, you, it's not anticipated that you need an adult supervisor in the, in the home during the summer daytime for teenagers, you know, 11 and 12-year-olds? That doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. I'm sorry. Do I correctly understand the proposed change?
You do correctly understand that, yes. And then, and then consider also that we are currently on a waiting list for our childcare subsidy program, so we do not currently have available slots to accommodate additional children that would be added to the waiting list.
Okay, thank you.
So if you, if you tried to, I mean, it's impossible to do a good job, but on number one, on the, on the part with administrative cost, you can quantify that, kind of what that is, what that would likely be costing us to pick up another 25%, or to lose a dollar.
Yeah, it'd be a lost revenue of, of about 50% of the revenue we receive on, on the food nutrition services side.
Do you know off the top of your head what kind of number that is?
I do not know, but I definitely can look that up and circle back to you.
That would probably, I mean, I realize the timing of this is probably of the essence to get it in, and we don't have another several weeks to go look for stuff, but if, if we quantify it, number one, for Forsyth County, number one means to us, boom, X dollars. For number two, we estimate adding 10 more years of monitoring, you know, to, to the population that we're serving, and to, and to have more intricate things would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of this. And then the error rate piece, it's, that's, I mean, it's impossible to have zero with that kind of, with the number of volume of things going on, information not available at that time something's made, get the information in, I mean, there's a lot of those things. There's a way to say these three, had some kind of estimate, that would probably strengthen this a lot.
Yes.
Of what it would appear to be, look at this kind of impact we're talking about.
Just for Forsyth versus, and, and you can expound that over to the whole state. So I can absolutely look at, at pulling out some data points that are specific to Forsyth in terms of this. We'll work on that. We should be able to have something for you by the end of the day tomorrow to be able to add in this.
Well, if we could have it by the time, because Thursday would be approving.
Thursday?
Approving this letter, and we could just add in a, it's kind of like emphasizing the impact for us.
Drives at home, absolutely.
We're being asked whether we want to add this as the 66, I, I would send that place in the end for Thursday.
Yes, because it needs to be sent.
If the Board would like to adopt this on Thursday, so that we could then send it to the Senators.
Could I say, I talked with Kevin Leonard this morning, who composed this letter, and he's the director in CACC. The one thing I would, the only letter that I want to send to Senator Bud and Senator Tillis is exactly what funding it will affect us, the funding. I do not want to get into the work requirements, I don't want to get into any of that, that is 100% their job, not mine. But it is my job to object to mandates that are going to affect our taxpayers. So if, if we could compose our own letter instead of Kevin's letter, and just point out the funding that, how it's going to affect our funding. I don't care to get into all this other stuff that they're talking about, because it may or may not happen. But if it does happen, they need to know, both those Senators from North Carolina need to know how it's going to affect counties, and the only way we can pay for it is through property tax. And they need to know exactly how much property tax that would entail. And so if we could write our own letter, I would, I would much rather, because I cannot support this letter.
So, so the, the issue there is, you know, trying to explain why that would impact us, and, and there, we can certainly cut down on, on the language if you'd like, but there needs to be some explanation. And it really is impossible to say what the impact is going to be on us, as the Chair indicated, the 25% number, we can get that, we can get that number, that's just half, as, as Chris just said, that's just half of what we're getting now. But the, the increase in bureaucracy, the increase of administrative work is going to be hard, but I suppose, Chris, it could try to, to give some kind of estimate, back-of-the-envelope estimate on that. And the error rate, that, that's something that will take time to figure out, but I think that may be ultimately the biggest part of this, because if, if we, if we in North Carolina have to pay 20% or whatever the number is of benefits, that would be excruciating.
And also, just to clarify, this is not the same as in CACC's letter. We actually tried to rework it to be a little bit more specific to Forsyth, even, even though we didn't put those impacts in there, but this is different than Kevin's letter.
Well, and, and I think they need to know that only 10 states administer SNAP, because I found out today, they don't know that.
That's right. That's in the first paragraph.
Yeah. So, I mean, they need to know that, and they need to know the. So, I mean, they need to know that, and they need to know the funding impact, and just be sure that they know that the only way we can pay for this is through property tax. So, you know, they need to know how it's going to affect the people that they are representing.
We'll, we'll rework it and send it out.
Thank you.
Well, I understand and appreciate the emphasis on the, the direct fiscal costs. I think that's a, a, certainly a reasonable emphasis to use with Senators Bud and Tillis. I think that it's directly relevant to the impacts on fiscal, not fiscal, on, on Forsyth County. If we see a specific in the bill that would, that would provide a, a food availability disincentive for parental supervision of 11-17-year-olds, that's a, I think, a real health and safety impact, adverse health and safety impact on, on, on our county and any other county that's impacted by that. That's, that was a startling figure when I saw that, which is why I asked about it. You know, some of the other language about individuals 55-64, I mean, we can argue either way, but I don't see any, any redeeming quality to the reduction of, of, of the eligibility based on the age of children in the household from, from 18 down to, to 11.
Of course, the 55 to 64, whatever staff it takes to monitor it, it's going to be monitoring for nine more years, if I read this right. Stops at age 55 now.
Yeah.
And so if you're going to, you can monitor a population for nine more years, you're going to, you have to have more people, whatever it takes to do that. You've increased your number of people by a certain percentage, every how many people in that age band as a percentage of the total.
And the number of households with children under 10. Is that the new segment?
Yeah, which is a, another piece of work. And that does amount to 20 hours per week on an average base to get your 80 hours of either training and/or work.
And this, even the language that we're talking about here is, is at the end of the paragraph couch in terms of additional fiscal direct impacts to county budgets. So it, it does get back to Commissioner Whitson's emphasis.
Okay. Yeah, it's good. Any other comments on that? All righty, are we done?
We are done, sir.
I hope so.
All righty, we'll see you on Thursday. Can't wait.